They'd like to call this meeting to order. Notice has been posted. Have a call to order.
Yes, the members of the Board of Adjustment are today are Mr. Randy Goodman.
Here.
And Mr. Cooper Robinson.
Here.
We have a call.
First item or number four on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Had a chance to review him, Mr. Robinson, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Yes, I would move to approve. The minutes in the previous meeting.
My second motion.
Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Aye, as presented.
And Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Approved.
The next item on the agenda is Eric, item number five, an application of Adam Ingram. Is Mr. Ingram present today? Pardon?
Representative.
Okay.
Um, just to give, yeah, just to give a little bit of background on the particular case and what they're asking for. This particular piece of property that you see was recently rezoned back towards the beginning of 2024 as a commercial PUD. And so these lots that you see in even the building to the south that is not have a lot number is part of that PUD. And so the general plat was recently heard by the planning commission back towards the beginning of this year, I think it was March, if I recall correctly. And so the planning commission approved the general plat, which is what you see before. And with a commercial PUD, typically you have the ability to change some of the setbacks if you so choose, or you can stay with the uh, basic zoning category of commercial in this case and stay with those setbacks. And so in this case, they decided to stick with what was there. And I guess after the general plat was approved, they've decided to change their mind. And so on the east side of this particular piece of property, uh, they are wanting to move that setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. And so the reason for that is the property that is adjacent to this is zoned R2. R2 zoning requires that if you have any more intensive zoning around it, you have to put up site proof screening, the 25 foot requirement comes in, all of that. Now, this particular structure that's built there is a church. Churches are allowed in any zoning district in Oklahoma County. Well, I will say the zoning district that is currently zoned is R2. So that's kind of the background of what we're discussing today. There was a letter of opposition that was submitted at the previous meeting, even though the item was not heard, it was deferred because the applicant wasn't here at the time. So I, I do have that uh, letter of opposition. I sent that to everybody in the previous, but I do have a copy if you want to look at that now as well.
The structure to the east is a church?
That is correct.
And the structure to the west is residential?
Uh, to the west where you see lot one is part of the, is part of the commercial PUD. So I don't know if that structure that you see on that picture still exists today. They may have demolished that.
Thank you.
But that's part of the commercial PUD. Correct, and, and the lot that is furthest to the south, that is south of lot one and lot three, where you see the structure there, that is also part of that PUD. But that's not part of this discussion. Really, it's the lots, lot two and three are the ones that are up for discussion today as far as the setback on the east side of those properties.
So really the true discussion is that 10 foot set, I'm sorry, Will Sullins Phase One design representing Adam Sullins. So really the discussion is that 10 foot setback um, from, on the east property line and looking at it from a development standpoint for that commercial lot two and portion of three. The lot two development would want to face Waterloo to have that street furniture and to achieve the desired goal, we would, we would need that 10 foot setback in those From a code standpoint, the 10 foot is our, our limit as far as being, if we were any closer, we'd have to rate that wall. Also at the same time, given the grade difference at that location, there's a substantial grade difference and we would more likely have to create a retaining wall. So that would actually help screen that church as well. I'm sorry? It's a small retail, like a little wood framed office retail, you know, like, almost like a small strip.
I don't. Well, so you said you want to, you want the setback to extend into lot three.
Uh huh.
Where does the, where does the grade change? Explain to me like.
So going from west to east, there's a substantial grade change on this, on this entire site. And.
Which side's higher?
West.
Okay.
And to, to kind of help balance out the side a little bit, um, they uh, you know, we would have to level out and change dirt to and from depending west to east and.
Okay. And are you going to construct some kind of retaining wall or? Okay.
Thank you.
The building that's showing on lot, you want to be still there?
Uh, that I do not know. I don't, I do not know if it's still there or not.
Uh, the applicant owns that wall.
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason, I mean, outside of the different grade level of dirt, how much dirt more could be required by that?
Do you have?
There's about 30,000 yards of dirt being moved right now on lots one, two, three, and four. It's a fairly large dirt project.
But you're, you're usually visiting dirt.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of the lot one?
Majority of it is coming from lot one on to lot two and three.
Do you know where they're on that building?
Lot one, uh, the building has been removed. Uh, lot three, there's a building uh, kind of on the south side. I, I think that's still there, but it won't be there for long. No, it's, it's located on lot two, I think it's 6,000 square feet and it's facing Waterloo with parking in the front. Yep.
Okay, so it will go all the way back into lot three and it will face?
No, it's, it's all contained within lot two. We're asking for lot three because once that develops, they'll have the same issue as lot two. We don't have plans for anything on lot three at this time. Lot two is the strip center.
I mean, lot three?
Nothing for lot three at this time.
So you don't, your client doesn't own lot one?
He owns one, two, three, and four, yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Jason Emmett, I'm with Cedar Creek Consulting, uh, 11912 North Penn, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Oh, I'm sure he does. Uh, I think there's a dental office looking at that one right now. Uh, it's, it's being marketed, but I don't think there's any LOI or letter of intent or it hasn't been sold or anything like that, so it's in the works. Lot two, however, the building is pretty much designed, uh, the, the site has been Yeah, lot two is ready to go. Of the building?
Sixty nine.
I want to say sixty to sixty-five by eighty, fifty-five wide, eighty deep, what? No, sixty-five deep, eighty, eighty plus wide, eighty-one, sixty.
Is there any margin for error, like between 10 and 25 feet? You have to go to 10 feet?
Yeah, anything over 10 requires that we lose a bay of the retail center and thus the project's not viable at that point financially.
Just, just. Lot two itself? 1.1 acre? 1.1 acre, 1.2? Oh, you mean width wise? Probably 200 feet? If I had, if I remember correctly. Just the reason I, I came back up here, just to add a little bit more complexity to this whole situation. Waterloo is a big traffic generator to I-35, which is just to the east. Basically, ODOT is now moving forward with the interchange improvements there on I-35. Waterloo is going to be four lane. Sooner Road, as you come back to the south, I want to say 1,500 to 2,000 feet from that intersection is going to be four lane. District three wants to put a roundabout in that intersection. Uh, if you look at that area that we have there, if you look at the northwest quarter, there is a gas station that pretty much sits on top of that intersection. And then you have the cemetery, which is on the southwest corner of that intersection. So I bring all that up to basically state that if District three and ODOT are going to four lane, that roadway is well as sooner and put a roundabout, you're going to have to shift that intersection to the south and east, which is then going to crowd their development as well.
So regarding the issue raised by the, uh, the church, um, the, the basis for the 25 foot setback, are there, are there safety concerns? Are there public, are there fire protection concerns? Is that the reason?
A lot of our, a lot of our setbacks are fire protection based because a lot of the fire departments that are out there are volunteer based fire departments. So it gives them time to respond. So the majority of our setbacks are set at 25 feet now with commercial when you're adjacent to residential, which I think a lot of people see churches as, you know, kind of a combination of those two. But the way the property is zoned currently, which is R2, which is the county's base zoning category, we always have it in our regulations when you have commercial industrial, that is next to residential, there is a higher standard setback to reduce the amount of noise uh, from traffic, from the activity that's going on at that commercial lot. So that can be accomplished, one, through the setback, but two, there's also screening requirements. So they may handle those requirements in this case with retaining wall, with landscaping, with fencing. So there are other requirements that are still, have to be met, even though you are pushing the setback further to the east.
We have the authority to impose any screening requirements?
If you want to oppose additional besides what we have, it's usually a conversation between the board and the applicant. What we require is, in this case, typically fencing. We can do fencing in combination with landscaping. Uh, like I said, there, they may be able to give more information in regards to the retaining wall, on what that would look at once, once it's complete, how far it would set up, how much that would screen their business from the church itself. So they may want to speak to that before you have that conversation.
Well, I'd like to address the, the building setback versus what's allowed to happen within the 25 feet current right now because we're still allowed to put parking and things like that. What we're asking for is that the building setback be moved so that, again, facing a building to the north, 80 foot long, um, it's the side of the building, it's not the front of the building that's going to be causing any kind of noise or anything like that. And again, the parking's going to be there regardless. In regards to the safety for the fire, um, I mean, we're going to meet state fire code because we have to. Um, and I believe again, and uh, not in Oklahoma County, but Oklahoma City and everywhere else, it's 10 feet from a property line meets the state fire code. In relation to the uh, screening requirements, um, I don't think that we have any issues with putting up a screening fence plus landscaping or anything like that.
Yeah, I think that would be important, you know, for my, my consideration of this matter.
Okay.
It would be a commitment for that kind of screening.
I have a question. If lot two is 200 feet wide and the setback currently 25 feet, I believe it's 175 feet, we have an 80 feet building to 90 feet, but it's property line.
Yeah, I'm, I. I apologize, it's not, it's 127 foot wide lot. Yes. And we have a drive on the west side of the lot, between lots two and three, that kind of coexist on both two and three and are shared. Yep. I'm sorry, between one and two going north south. No, you only have access to the back of the building on the west side of the building. Again, the goal would be to shift the building as close to the property line as possible so that you're sharing a lot of drives and parking between lots one, two, and three away from the church and not putting a drive on the east side of our proposed building between the church and. Well, it's, it could be shared. It's uh, obviously it's very expensive to build a whole bunch of concrete and if you put a drive on the west side between lots two and one, it becomes utilized by both parties.
It's the same.
And even, even if, when he sells a, a lot, it's, I think within the covenants, there's going to be cross access, cross parking. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to function as one development. They're all conceptual at this time. I mean, I, I wish I'd brought something to you and I could have shown you what that was going to look like, but they're. On lot one, yes. I'm confused, I'm sorry. That's correct. Well, he does own it, but they're, they're tenant driven. So if there's no tenant for lot one yet, you don't decide what to build. You wait until you have a tenant interested. And like, I think we did a dental layout and it was a very large dental, a very nice clinic. And we kind of tried to mesh the two together, but you, you can't move forward with lot one because they haven't done anything, the tenant hasn't. Lot two is a medical. Yeah, it's, it's an urgent care for that area anyway, which is much needed for that area on lot two. It's much needed. Uh, it's going to serve the community well. And I think two thirds of the 6,000 square foot building is for the urgent care.
I would move to approve the variance request with the understanding and commitment that, from the owner, that there would be screening involved with landscaping and a fence and/or retaining wall. Well, I think you said the retaining wall is going to happen anyway.
My second.
Mr. Goodman? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
So I have a question then. So if that's the case, so do, they don't need to reapply, we just move that forward to the next available meeting to be reheard?
Okay.
So since we don't, since we don't have a set meaning of when that next meeting is going to occur, I will have to contact Mr. Ingram to let him know that date once that meeting is set. Right, I understand, I understand that. Right, that's, that's what was my concern was reapply. I would say. I mean, typically we just move forward with the next meeting. So I'll notify Mr. Ingram and let him know. Yes, just provide some background information as far as the case for you. You can see the, the drawing there in front of you. Uh, the issue in this particular case is, is the home itself is past the 40 foot build line that you see, which is the dash red line. And what is, this is part of a small development along Southeast 29. Uh, it's actually just west of Henny Road on the south side. Just west of Henny on the south side of 29. So across from this, if you're familiar with the area, is the Timberland Mobile Home Park, which is directly north. Uh, that's actually their driveway that you see there. And so that was one of the things that the builder contacted the county about, was to try to line up those driveways. Anyways, that's kind of a side conversation, but um, so we're here to discuss the placement of the house as it sits today, which is what you see there before you. Um, I'll have to have the applicant kind of explain more. What I mean by that is, the building permit that was submitted to the county by Richardson Homes, which I have a copy of it here in front of you, would like to take a look at it, has the home in the proper location. Uh, that was how it was approved. So I don't know how we got to this point, based on the picture that was provided to us with the building permit application, but I will have the applicant speak to that issue. So that's what we're here to discuss. So basically they're past the 40 foot build line and the front of the house is actually probably a few feet into the county's right of way, which along this road is 75 feet from the middle of Southeast 29 as you go back towards the property itself.
No, she's on a business meeting uh, in summer resort doing a team thing. Heath Simmons. And to give insight on the driveway location, the school bus stops on 29th Street right there and the original PUD said it wanted it on the east side. And so I discussed the safety issue of the bus stopping there and our driveway there instead of creating another uh, entry exit point on 29th Street as for safety reasons to have it built where it was. And how we got here was the mortgage inspection report uh, was hired and that's how we learned that we were over the build line. Yes.
Your relationship to the applicant?
She's my wife.
Okay. So you didn't construct the home?
No, sir, Richardson Homes did.
When, did you buy the home from Richardson Home?
No, it's uh, construction. We did a construction build home. So we hired them to build the home.
So you've been required to come here by your mortgage, mortgagie?
I would say that, yes. We can't go any further until they get the title clearance and we need the approval for this house location.
But this has nothing to do with the driveway?
It has nothing to deal with the driveway, it has to deal where the house was built. The documentation, when I bought the land, um, it said it had a final plot and there was never anything mentioned about a 75 foot build line. I knew about the 40 and I thought the 40 started at the road. And so when the builder and I, superintendent pulled the dimensions, we even pulled it back another 10 feet from where we thought it was allowed to build. I can tell you, on the west side of our property, as you drive past, both driveways going west, on our side of the road is about seven feet, 10 feet of sand rock on that road. And then on the east side of the property, you can see the first pine tree that there's about three feet below the road and it just keeps going down to where I, I would say the edge of our property is about five to seven feet. And keep going, there's one lot in between us, the gentleman who built duplexes, which you cannot see going east, uh, his first one's probably about 15 to 20 feet below street grade. And the next one comes up, so there's a real big dip down in there. Yes, it is, sir. Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the variance. Eric, do you have any comment? Before we take a vote? Have you ever seen this before?
No, I haven't. Now, we've had some cases that are somewhat similar to this. Uh, there was one that we had in front of the board a few years ago, you guys weren't members. It was on Southeast 15th and Luther Road. Uh, the building was built just outside of the right of way. The right of way in that case was 33 feet. And so if we ever came in there to widen Luther Road, we would probably have to obtain that structure because we would be into that structure with the additional right of way. So typically we require an additional 17 feet of right of way for a total of 50 feet when we go to widen roadway. So in that instance, we would own a, an outbuilding and we would end up tearing it down. Uh, that was. That was approved by the Board of Adjustment at that time. There was another case on Northeast 220th and, say, Chalk Town Road, if I recall correctly. It was an outbuilding. And the property owner, again, had built it too close to the roadway. We had a hundred-foot setback. That was required, I want to say they were like, if I recall correctly, forty feet. And that outbuilding was twenty-five percent under construction and the board at that time decided to have them move the structure to where it was supposed to be. So, they denied their request, but the, that structure was only twenty-five percent complete. So, they had the ability to move the structure to meet our requirements in that case. Obviously, this home is done, it's built, they're living in it. Just to kind of expand on some of the topography issues that he's talking about, this lot, the lot next to it, and he's, even as you go east towards Henny Road, are very difficult lots to build on to begin with. The duplexes that he's referring to were two duplexes that recently just completed. And I was actually, I went out there on site itself to look at it. And so, if you're driving along Southeast 29th, you're looking down into these duplexes. So, your, the road is substantially higher than these structures themselves, to where, when you enter the driveway to get to these duplexes, the grade, you know, there's a pretty significant decline from the road to get to these structures themselves. So, there is a pretty big topography issue as you go east and as you go south away from the road. That is a hundred percent accurate. Because that was an issue with those duplexes when they were being built at the time as well, as far as trying to determine where to place the driveway and all of that. And so, that was part of the discussion about this driveway, why it was brought up. Originally, the driveway location was supposed to be between this lot and the lot to the east. So, if you see that lot line, as part of the original PUD, the agreement was to have a shared driveway location to where, the easiest way to probably think about it is to have a little cul-de-sac there at that, where those two properties meet. And then, you split off from that point to enter those property, each individual property at that point. That was the original location. Obviously, with that big gray difference between where the road is and, and all of that, obviously, that's substantially more difficult to put that actually driveway into place when it came time to, to build the structures and everything else, from when we originally have in the discussions of the rezoning and just the concept of the development itself. So, even though the driveway is not here for discussion, that was something that, that was discussed between the county and the builder and that location of the driveway, everybody's agreed to. So, like I said, that's not the issue. But what I stated earlier goes into the history of some other projects that are somewhat similar to this. Obviously, the main difference is, this is a single-family home where the other projects were outbuildings. So, significant, significantly different type of structure.
Stacy, Stacy Trove County engineer. I don't know what you do with this, but the worst thing about this is you've got a single-family home setting in public right-of-way. And I don't know anywhere else that exists.
And I don't know what you do about it. I, Mr. Simmons, I hope you got a really good deal.
That remains to be said.
No, I do not.
The, 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 you know, for, 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 if they widen 29th Street to, 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 um, that's probably active, that would be not, some of them would be left out of that, of that, some of them, um, is that when they approach it from your house or is it driveway or is it just the, uh?
I mean, it's, it's going to encroach, so the road's going to be potentially closer to his home. He would still be along the right-of-way of the road, because typically, that's where you're going to have your drainage. Now, who knows at that point in time if it's going to be still a bar ditch or if it's going to be curb and gutter. Obviously, that, that's yet to be seen. But potentially, what you would run into is where the, the road is closer to his home and the bar ditches and stuff are going to be closer to the house, at the end of the day.
You also have a gas line being ran from across the street to the front of the house. And I think that's about four feet under for the gas line.
So, I mean, typically with these projects, when you get into moving utilities and all that, all these things are considered when it comes to the cost, but also, where do you move those utilities to?
There's, there's also the city, New West City worked to deal with that trailer park to do sewer back to them and it comes on my line and it's ran all the way.
This is why it's also street from Timbuktu.
Correct.
So, it's the, the ones that you were talking about, the Condo, that, that.
Duplexes, yes, or duplexes. East, east.
That's her east.
Right. Yes, Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Hey, Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Uh, yes, uh, this, this is pretty straightforward. This particular development is called Bowman Ranch. It's on the very northeast part of the county. So, basically, it's at northeast 150th and Potawatomi Road is the east, most major road east of this development. It's been there for, for quite some, quite some time, if I recall correctly. I think a lot of this was planted back in the mid-eighties, early nineties. So, it is basically, all these lots that are out there are two acres in size. All of this is zoned R2, which is the rural residential base zoning category that, that the county has. Um, in this particular case, with R2, you can only have one residential structure, whatever that may look like, manufactured home, onsite built home, anything in between. And so, in this particular case, they have the main home that you see in the middle of the property there, but they also have a smaller structure there to the east. Just a little bit more background of how this case was brought to the county. Somebody out there in the neighborhood contacted us about the structure being there and also drainage issues from the property itself. Our inspector went out there, anybody that contacts us with potential issues, we go out to investigate. And so, that's how we came across this. I have a few pictures that our inspector took as far as the, the structure in question itself. But basically, they would like to keep the additional structure out there and they want to utilize the medical hardship provision that the county has in our regulations. That was spelled out in the, in the staff report that was provided to you guys as far as their criteria. And so, at, at the end of the day, the Board of Adjustment has the ability to approve the medical hardship condition. Typically, they will do that at a one, two, or three-year time period. At the end of whatever time period is chosen, if any, then the applicant will have to come back, if the medical hardship still exists, to reapply again. And then, the Board of Adjustment can hear their request at that time to see if the medical hardship needs be, uh, continue for a period of time, again, one, two, or three years, or if it needs to end. Also, at the end of the time period, if one is put on, then we will contact the property owner to see if we even need to move forward with the extension of the medical hardship provision, if it's granted to begin with. If it's not needed anymore, then the structure that you see there has to be removed from the property. So, that's just kind of a quick overview of what that is. I will provide you these pictures so you can see what structure we're talking about at this time.
Yeah, so, Eric, the, in the, in the diagram, the hardship trailer is the existing trailer.
It's the one that's in red.
That's described on, as the primary trailer. Do you have an extra copy of the report? Because I can't, I'm having trouble downloading it.
Yes, what's on the drawing, I'm sorry, is incorrect. Flip that to where the, and I'll let, yeah, maybe I'm wrong, I'll let the applicant speak. But from my understanding, the, the main trailer that you see there in the picture is the one that's been there. The, I guess, the additional structure that's, the red hatch structure is a new one that's been moved in, from my understanding, but I'll let the applicant speak to that, I may be wrong.
Eric, before, have you, have you gone through an investigation? Have you determined that they need the requirements of, of the conditions for approval?
That's, that's for them to prove to the board.
Okay.
As I don't vote or control any of that. We just provide them the information if they want to go through this process and they bring that information forward to the board.
Okay.
I'm Mr. Goodman. And as far as the drainage is, issue so far, I've put tin horns in my driveway and I've cut the ditch to let everything drain. My neighbor can attest to that, I'm doing other neighbors for free. The guy that did call in is a quarter mile to the east. We really don't have anything to do with him. And there was a discussion with him, there was a misunderstanding and that's why he had called. But I would like for him to speak on my behalf as far as the rest of the hardship stuff, if that's okay? Yes.
And I'm Richard Romero, just representing the Romero family that is in that hardship trailer. So, everything is Romero, R-O-M-E-R-O, yep. So, everything in the diagram is right, but to be very frank, when we submitted for the application, we were not sure that, of the, like, medical program. So, we, we just submitted for hardship. I even put in a formal cover document that was returned back to me by the representative. So, now with understanding, there's that standard medical, um, one that we just didn't know, but we are in a hardship. We were looking to go instead under the title nineteen eight sixty-three dot twenty-four. So, currently, what's happening is, they were going to move in with this new trailer because Sydney and Dustin had been living in a camper for the last two years. Yes, sir. Uh, nineteen eight sixty-three dot twenty-four. And basically, so they were going to come from their camper to move back here and re- reduce that trailer, the hardship trailer, to get out. And me and my family are currently going through a divorce trial that is currently, right now, as of April. So, we just started this. And so, instead of removing the trailer, he offered to let me just stay there until I can gain the financial position for me and my children. So, obviously, we know, as with a camper, it's very hard to have a child, a newborn child, inside of the camper. So, that's why they moved here and we definitely do not need a permanent anything. We're just looking for a temporary situation. And the guy that came out, the HOA guy, he did also mention that these things are normally not flagged, that somebody must have complained. And as we did discuss, there was a altercation with that gentleman. It was very much blown out of proportion. He originally called the HOA and they were on our side. Yeah, I, I don't, I want to clarify on that.
There's not a homeowners' association. There used to be a long time ago, but he's not talking about HOA, uh, county. One of you guys, this county guy, came out and let us know that there was going to be.
Yes, but what did that guy call?
He was a county, he was like a county assessor, he's not HOA.
Yeah.
There's not, yeah, he's the one that came out and let us know that there was a problem and that we needed to kind of take care of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hold on, what's the relationship between the party that lives in the existing trailer and the party that's going to be living in the hardship trailer?
Uh, we're just very personal friends, business friends, we, you know, been in business for many years together.
There's no relationship by blood or merit?
There is not, that's why when we saw the medical thing, we would have never applied for that. We applied strictly for this, but I guess now, in, in turn, I understand that that is not traditional. Yes. Sorry. Yes, currently. We have two, we have three children, uh, I have three children. No, my, no. Yeah. We're going through full custody currently, um, Friday, this Friday is our custody hearing. So, the house is, yes, they're here with me as well, yeah. No. Yeah. This is our lifeline. This is all we have for both of us, really. Yes, yes, I'm employed right now, obviously, with the court. I am going pro se, so I've been spending this last month defending myself very rigorously, but, from the defend, uh, from the divorce. So, yeah, there's a lot of context to the, there's a lot of psychological harm that's happening at their home, so. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, right now, Red Clay's Landscape and Excavation, L.A. Sod. Um, he's not asking for anything. Not yet, that's why he's giving it to me for free, so that way I can accustom the money to get my own place. And so, I'm hoping within, after the divorce and everything is finalized and getting back on my feet, that we'll get out of there and they can reduce that structure, continue their plans.
Is the hardship trailer on the property now?
Yes.
The one in the middle has been there for years, probably over twenty years. The new trailer is the one that I bought from my wife. We were about to have maybe any day, we were staying in a camper on her family's property prior to this. And then, so I moved the new trailer in with plans on, which I still plan on tearing the other one down eventually, but I'm trying to help him out, let him. Huh? Right now, I'm living where the red trailer is. The red, the red crosshatch thing. But I just, yes. Yes, but I, I was not living in the other trailer prior to, I just moved back to that property recently.
Who owns the property?
I do.
Okay.
And I just, just acquired it this year.
So, there's no relationship between you two?
Not blood, no.
And... I'm having a hard time seeing what the medical hardship is.
Again, that's why I stated, when we first originally applied for the hardship, we had no idea that it was, I just stated it with a cover letter of our hardship and it had nothing to do with medical. So, that's why when we got the letter, we were both like, well, there's no medical anything. So, we wanted to clarify that here with full context, that there was never an, any intention to file for a medical anything. It was always under this title nineteen eight sixty-three dot twenty-four, that if we were to be removed, that either one of us, it would literally be detrimental for the children, most importantly.
Eric, do you have any comment on what this title nineteen is talking about?
Title nineteen eight sixty-three has nothing to do with Oklahoma County. Oklahoma County deals with title nineteen eight, eight sixty-eight. That's only, we're the only county in the state of Oklahoma that goes by that state statute. So, I think that the title that he's referring to, there are other counties that go by that particular statute, not us. So, typically, eight sixty-three deals with counties that have a city-county relationship. So, Tulsa, city of Tulsa, Tulsa County, Rogers County with Claremore, Wagner, city of Wagner, Wagner County, those are examples of eight sixty-three.
Okay. So, under Article Four of our zoning procedures, Section Eight, medical hardship special exception from manufactured homes, is that correct, two B two? Medical Hardship Special Exception from Manufactured Homes, is that correct? Two B two?
What page are you on, so I can follow?
Page one fifteen.
Okay. That is correct. So it continues on from, it goes from one fifteen over into one sixteen as well.
Not to be related by blood or marriage. And the extenuating condition shall not be caused by the applicant for the exception. The special exception shall not be granted unless medical hardship exists caused by a physical condition such as age or infirmity or by mental condition in the principal. I remember we had a case not long ago.
And actually, that, you mentioned that case. That's in the southeast part of the county. That case is actually coming up here within the next month to potentially be reheard to see if that needs to continue or not. But.
Right. The location of such hardship unit shall conform to the setback height and parking requirements?
Setback is not an issue.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Romero, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just appreciate you guys. Like I said, I'm learning a lot of these things. What I was, because we definitely do recognize that we don't fall under that hardship program. I was looking at this one that says that the board can grant a special exemption where the strict zone would cause unnecessary hardship. So as long as it doesn't harm public interest, that's exactly just what's happening. I wasn't sure if that right one, if that's the one that we were both correlating at the same one or. I just, I'm learning. I'm more than hoping to just learn and make sure I'm on the right page. Perfect. So I was missing the first part. Thank you for that. Thank you. Yep, so. Yep, yep. So he was just clarifying that. And like I said, I appreciate that very much. But we are still very much of a hardship. And I know that there was that complaint that rarely does come across your table, but we definitely do, we need your assistance more than anything. And we're hoping just sometime to where I can get all my ducks in a row and we can proceed and move into a new home.
So typically, just like with this case, the whomever the gentleman had contacted us in the area, we have to go out and investigate whatever the issue is. If we find the issue exists, we notify the property owner. We notify them by letter. So we give them time to contact us to discuss the options. So in this case, really, your only two options are is to either remove the other home that's there or to go through this process. We let them know what options they had. They wanted to move forward with this. So if the board decides to deny their request, then we would give them time to remove the structure. Typical timetable that we give to come into compliance with any of our requirements is thirty days. And then at that point in time, then we get into an issue of writing a citation, which is very, very rare. And then we go to court. And then it's up to the court to determine whatever the punishment may be. I can give you an example, which is not similar to this, if you would like, of kind of what that looks like. But you tell me if you want to go down that road. Okay.
Seems though I don't believe it fits the definition of a medical hardship under the zoning zoning regulations for the county. And there's no relationship by blood or marriage. I would move to deny the variance request.
Mr. Goodman? Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
So you're both, you're both no?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Is there any way that we can get an exemption just for sixty days instead of the traditional thirty days?
No, sir.
I would move to adjourn.
Mr. Goodman? Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
We're adjourned.